Welcome to the 2021 Annual Dover Town Meeting. Because of the unusual circumstances as a result of COVID-19, we hope to keep this meeting as short as possible. We have been advised by medical experts that the shorter our meeting, the lower the risk of contracting COVID-19. As a result, we will depart significantly from prior practices in order to expedite the meeting as quickly as possible. I would like to thank our town clerk, Felicia Hoffman, our police chief, Peter McGowan, all town employees, and the crews who have set up the sound system and chairs, thereby ensuring that the plan for our safety is properly executed. Please remember that you should wait to be recognized before you speak. Also, please stay seated after the meeting is adjourned so that you can be directed to leaving the stadium one row at a time. As discussed in the introductory remarks in our Blue Book, we ask that citizens combine their questions or comments to no more than two minutes. Our assistant moderator, David Havlin, will be monitoring the time. As you were checking in, you were giving a clicker, and what I would like to do now is to make sure that your clickers are working. So when I give the sign, press 1 for yes, we should be getting the meaning, or press 2 for no. And after you press, you should see a green light, but wait for my sign. You may vote now. You done? Okay, if you don't have a green light, please raise your right hand, or your left hand if you like. I'm sorry. Oh, it's closed, okay. All right, let's try this again. We'll try again. Please vote now. And you should see a green light flash as you're voting. Okay. If you can't see the green light, if you look in the screen, there'll be a 1A flashing after your vote, and that will tell you that your vote has been registered. We all set? Okay. Before we start the articles that are in the Blue Book, it's customary that we adopt a rule with respect to the conduct of the meeting. Mr. Kinder.
Mr. Moderator, I move with the following rule to be adopted for the conduct of this meeting. Any amendment to a main motion that would increase an appropriation must contain a provision for the source of funds for the increase, such that the total amount to be raised and appropriated at the meeting will not be increased.
Thank you, Mr. Kinder. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Andrews has a second. This is a majority vote. When I give you the sign, press 1 for yes, you approve the motion, or press 2 for no, you object to the motion. You may vote now. And again, you'll have eight seconds to register your vote. Motion carries? All right, motion carries. Okay, on to the first article, which is at the beginning of your Blue Book. Article 1, Mr. Kinder.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the reading of various reports by the town clerk be waived, and the reports be accepted and placed on file.
Thank you, Mr. Kinder. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Andrews has a second. Seconded, any discussion? Okay, again, if you're in favor of this motion, please press 1 for yes, 2 for no. You may vote now. Motion carries? Okay, motion carries. Article 2, which is at page 29 of your Blue Book. Mr. Kinder.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the salaries recommended for elected officials of the town, as shown in the right-hand column of the warrant committee report, be called over by the moderator, and that if no objection is raised to any of them, they be approved as read.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kinder. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded, and I read over the salaries that are on page 29 of your Blue Book. As I'm reading them, if you want to object to one of the salaries or information, please say hold. The motion we're voting on now empowers me to read out these items, and again, if you object, please say hold. Otherwise, if nobody objects after I read them, the salaries are deemed to have been approved. So now the motion is to empower me to do that. If you're in favor of allowing me to read out the items, you'll press 1 for yes, 2 for no. I see a question? Can you come up to the microphone, please? Hang on a second. This microphone's not on here, because you turned these on. Hang on a second, sorry.
Is it working now?
Yes. Okay, so if you're in favor of the motion that will allow me to read over the items that's on page 29, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, press 2 for no. You may vote now. Is the motion carrying? Okay, motion carries. So I will now read over the items at the bottom of page 29. Again, if you have a question or an objection, please shout out or raise your hand. Board of Selectmen, Chairman, 200. Clerk, Board of Selectmen, 150. Other member, 100. Assessors, Chairman, 400. Other members each, 350. Town Clerk, 81,764. Planning Board, Chairman, 100. Other members each, 50. Constables, 3 each, 150. Board of Health, 150. Other members each, 100. I didn't hear any objections or say any, did you? Okay, the motion is deemed to have passed, thank you. Article 3, which is on page 30 of your Blue Book. Mr. Kinder.
Mr. Moderator, I move that pursuant to the provisions of Section 5-16 Finances of the General Bylaws of the Town of Dover, the town authorize the following board and department revolving fund limits. 1. Building Department, A. Gas Inspector, $9,800. B. Plumbing Inspector, $17,500. C. Wiring Inspector, $34,500. 2. Board of Health, A. Perk and Deep Pool Inspection and Permitting, $40,000. B. Septic Inspection and Permitting, $50,000. C. Well Inspection and Permitting, $20,000. D. Swimming Pool Inspection and Permitting, $10,000. 3. Library, A. Materials Placement, $5,000. 4. Council on Agent, A. Senior Activities of Transportation, $35,000. 5. Recycling Committee, A. Material Sales Proceeds, $4,000. And further, please charge these services with credit to the respective accounts, and that before much of the boards or departments be authorized to make expenditures in the respective accounts and for their respective purposes up to the amount set forth above.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kinder. Do I hear a second? Mr. Andrews has seconded. Again, the items that were listed by Mr. Kinder are on page 30 of the Blue Book. Is there any discussion with respect to these items? Okay, let's proceed to a vote. Press 1 for yes, approving these items, or 2 for no. You may vote now. Okay, motion carries. Article 4, which is on page 32 of your Blue Book. Mr. Kinder.
Mr. Moderator, I move that salaries and expenses recommended by the departments, officers, boards, and committees of the town, shown in the FY22 request column in the warrant committee report, be called over by the moderator, and if no objection is made, the town appropriate such sums and raise such amounts from the tax levy and from other general revenues of the town, and that the town transfer the following sums to meet in part appropriations made at this town meeting. $100,000 from overlay surplus for line 132 reserve fund. $531,983 in MSDA reimbursements for line items 710 and 751, and that the treasury be authorized to transfer $309,475 from line item 914 group insurance to the Dover Other Post Employment Benefits, OPEB trust fund.
Thank you, Mr. Kinder. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Andrews has a second. Again, this motion is asking me to call over the items of pages 32 to 41 on the Blue Book, and if there is no objection, they'll be deemed to have been approved. If somebody does have a question or an objection, we'll have a hold on those items, and we will come back and vote separately on those items. Any discussion on this motion? Yes, please come to the microphone.
I'm just curious what accounts for the huge disparity in percentage increases in the salary? 240% for the planning board and 1.9% for the building maintenance person?
Okay, Mr. Dwellie, would you like to respond to that?
Sure. At last year's town meeting, the town voted to create a full-time planning position. That was a new position for the community, and so that is the amount that you see represented in the salary line for the planning board this year, is to pay for that position that we hired.
Ma'am, could you also state your name and address, please? I'm sorry, I should have asked you.
Sierra Bright, 55 Smith Street. Okay, so that's the planning board, but then there's 18.4% for someone else, 9 point something for someone else. I mean, what regulates the percentage of salary increase?
Mr. Dwellie?
So typically, salaries will only increase for each department based on a cost-of-living adjustment that's voted on by the personnel board and then recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Warrant Committee. For any other larger increases, that could represent either additional hours for that particular position in that particular department, or a new part-time or full-time position. So without knowing an explicit line or explicit question, that is how you generally see increases for salaries.
Okay, any further discussion? So again, this will allow me to read the items in the Blue Book, and if there are any questions, holes, or objections, we'll have to come back and vote on those items separately. But this is simply allowing me to read them. If there are no objections, then the items will be deemed to have been approved. Press 1 for yes, 2 for no, you may vote now. Motion carries. Okay, I'm now going to read the broad categories of items. Again, these items begin on page 32 of the Blue Book. And the first broad category is for general government expenditures, beginning on page 32, continuing over the page 33, and ending on page 34. The total amount for general government expenditures is $2,862,172,000, which is being requested for the 2022 fiscal year. And that number appears in the sixth column on the right-hand side under Fiscal Year 2022. So again, if you look at page 34, general government expenditures, total of $2,862,172,000, which is being requested for fiscal year 2022. The next broad category is at the bottom of page 34, and is protection of persons and property. Those items extend from the bottom of page 34 through page 35, and end at the top of page 36. The total for protection of persons and property, which appears on page 36 of the file, for fiscal year 2022, is $3,508,858. Again, that number at the bottom of page 36, for protection of persons and property, is $3,508,858. The next broad category is health and sanitation, which appears on page 37. The total for health and sanitation, which appears towards the bottom of page 37, is Again, for health and sanitation, towards the bottom of page 37, a total of $547,166. The next broad category is highway and bridges, begins at the bottom of page 37 and extends halfway down page 38. The total for highway and bridges is $1,593,821. Again, that's halfway down page 38, the total for highways and bridges is $1,593,821. The next category is other public services, in the middle of page 38, begins in the middle of page 38, and ends on page 39. And the total for fiscal year 2022 for other public services is $1,601,944. The next item is unclassified services. It begins and ends on page 39. And the total for unclassified services is $12,375. Again, that's $12,375 for unclassified services on page 39. The next item is insurance and pensions, and appears on page 40. Again, that's insurance and pensions on page 40. The total for fiscal year 2022 for insurance and pensions is $4,723,552. And 40 cents. So let me repeat that. And again, that's for insurance and pensions on page 40. Schools also begins on page 40 and ends on page 41. The total for schools, again, beginning on page 40 and ending on page 41, is $23,275,055. Again, that's $23,275,055 on page 41 for schools. Lastly, maturing debt and interest appears on page 41 also. And for fiscal year 22, the total is $951,850. Again, that's $951,850. The total operating budget, which also appears at the bottom of page 41, is $39,076,793.40, which represents an increase of 1.5% over the current year. Any questions or holes? Okay, the article is deemed to have been approved then. Thank you. On to Article 5, Mr. Kinder.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the following sums recommended for the various capital purposes be called over by the moderator, and if no objection is made, the town raise and appropriate such sums unless another funding source is noted, and that any sums realized from the trade-in or auction of old equipment shall be used to reduce the cost of the acquisition of new equipment or to purchase related accessories.
Thank you, Mr. Kinder. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Andrews has a second. And again, this motion is going to ask me to call over the items appearing at pages 42 to 46 of the Blue Book. As I'm calling them, if you have any objections or questions, please say hold. If nobody objects or asks a question, then the items will be deemed to have been approved. So the motion that we're voting on now is now giving me the authority to call those items over. Any questions with respect to the motion we're voting on? Press 1 for yes, 2 for no, you may vote now. Motion carries. Okay, if you turn to page 42 of the Blue Book, you'll see the items that I'm now going to be reading. The first item is from the Cemetery Commission, tractor mower, $15,000. The next item is fire department, extrication equipment, $19,156, and direct diesel exhaust capture system, $88,935. We're now on page 43. Police Department, towards the bottom of page 43, portable radio, $75,000. Carrying over to page 44, school department, chickering school, flooring, $80,000, and cold water booster system, $15,000. $15,500, so again, cold water booster system, $15,500. Number 5, which is on page 45, Selectmen, townhouse roof, which is $700,000, and that will be coming from free cash. $700,000 from free cash. Hold on, are you holding? Oh, okay, you're holding, thank you. I'll come back to you in a second. Protective agencies' fire alarm, $38,000. Okay, any questions or holes with respect to other items? I heard one with respect to townhouse roof, $700,000 from free cash. Any other items? Okay, the other items are deemed approved. We have a hold with respect to townhouse roof. Ma'am, would you like to come up to the microphone? And again, please state your name and address.
Sierra Bright, 55 Smith Street. It seems to me that for savings of $200,000, which is less than a third of the total cost of the roof, if we had real slate, that would last twice as long, judging by how long this slate roof has lasted, which is 100 years pretty much. So that doesn't seem like good economy to me.
Okay, with somebody from the boroughs, would you like to respond to that? Uh, Robin? All right, Barry, okay, Barry Goldman, head of capital budgets, Barry, are you here? Would you like to respond to that? And because of the wind, please speak into the microphones closely so that we can hear you all. Thank you, Barry.
We did look at that aspect, and there is a large maintenance requirement for slate. So we determined that over a lengthy period of time, the slate actually costs considerably more than the architectural changes.
Okay, thank you, Barry. Ma'am, do you have any further questions or comments?
No, I'm just sorry to see the slate go.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Goldman. Okay, any other questions? Okay, now we'll have to have a separate motion with respect to the townhouse roof, $700,000 from free cash. Mr. Kinder.
Mr. Moderator, I move that $700,000 be raised and appropriated for free cash for the townhouse roof.
Thank you, Mr. Kinder. Do I hear a second? Okay, Mr. Kinder has made a motion that we take $700,000 from free cash to spend for our new townhouse roof. Mr. Andrews has seconded. Any questions or discussion? Okay, you may press 1 for yes, 2 for no, you may vote now. Just waiting to get results of the vote. Thank you. Motion carries 58 to 18. Okay, on to the next article. Now, this is a consent article that is bundling four articles that are routinely approved at every town meeting and usually are not at all controversial. So I'll first ask Mr. Kinder to make the motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Articles 6, 7, 8, and 9 be called over by the moderator, and if no objection is made, the town votes approved.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made, and I call over Articles 6, 7, 8, and 9, which begin at page 46 of your Blue Book. And the motion is to empower me to call over those articles, and if there are no holes or questions, those articles will be deemed to have been approved. Any questions with respect to the motion we're voting on? All in favor, please press 1 for yes, 2 for no. Motion carries? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so now if you turn to, again, page 46 of the Blue Book, the first item is Article 6, appropriation for unemployment compensation fund, requesting $10,000. The second item is Article 7, appropriation for a sick leave for retiring police officers, also requesting $10,000. The next item is Article 8, which is not actually requesting any amount, but is empowering the Board of Selectmen to seek funding if it's appropriate for road construction, reconstruction, and improvements. And the last item is Article 9, which is on page 47, and it's asking for the appropriation of funds to the conservation fund in the amount of $25,000. Are there any questions or holes with respect to any of these items? Hearing none, the items are deemed approved. Motion is approved, the articles are approved. Okay, next. This wind is tough with my notebook. Next, Article 10, which is on page 47 of your Blue Book. Mr. Kinder.
Mr. Moderator, I'm sorry. Mr. Mo— I'm sorry. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to create a stabilization fund in accordance to Section 5d of Chapter Forty of the Massachusetts General Laws, to fund capital projects or to pay debt services related to capital projects, and further to appropriate six-hundred-thousand dollars from free cash.
Okay. Is everybody able to hear, Mr. Kendr? Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made, is seconded. Ms. Hunter, you want to speak to this motion?
Please.
Okay.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
So I just wanted to give a brief overview of what this Capital Stabilization Fund is and why the Board of Selectment is recommending that it be established. So as you all know, over the past couple of years, what the Board of Selectment have been trying to do is to put in place long-range financial planning tools, and this is one of them. So we hired outside consultants to prepare capital needs assessments of all our buildings. What those reports do is they give us an idea of what we need to do to all our facilities over the next twenty years. The creation of this Capital Assessment Fund is set up so that we can basically create a savings account for the town for capital, for future capital expenditures. Rather than having peaks in our request for budget items that we know need to be replaced, such as roofs, windows, floors, we will each year set aside funds in this capital needs, in this Capital Stabilization Fund to pay for those. By doing this, we will smooth out the tax rate, which is our objective here. We don't want to have spike each year in the tax rate. The six-hundred-thousand dollars that is coming from free cash is seed money to establish this account. This account was discussed at the Board of Selectment with Warren and also with the Capital, Capital Lea— the Capital Budget Committee, and everybody supported, supported the establishment of this account. Lastly, we believe it also provides fiscal transparency, so everyone will know funds in this account can only be used for capital purchases, and it will require a two-thirds vote at town meetings.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hunter. Are there any questions with respect to this motion? Again, it's to appropriate six-hundred-thousand dollars from free cash into a Capital Stabilization Fund. Yes, ma'am? Name and address, please.
Justine Kenery, Tam, Heaven Street. My only real concern with this is taken in conjunction with the vote we're going to have a month from now regarding Carroll School. My question is, would this, if indeed the price of the Carroll School project comes in above what was promised at the last all-town meeting, could these funds, Robyn, be used to aid for any increases in the Carroll School project?
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hunter, would you like to respond to that?
You know, the town decides how these funds are used. We are establishing this account solely for replacement of items and newly created items, such as large building projects. I don't foresee funds from this account being used for that. But again, it's a conversation that can be had, and if the town votes that this is the way they would like to use those funds, then that option would be available to the town.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Justine. Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, this is a two-thirds vote. So if you're in favor, please press one for yes. Okay, motion carries. What was the vote? Sixty-four to thirteen. As more than two-thirds, motion's approved. Okay, to Article eleven, Mr. Kendr.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Articles Eleven, Fourteen, and Fifteen be called over by the moderator, and if no objection is made, that the town vote to dismiss them.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Now, this is another consent motion where we're bundling articles in order to try to save time, and it involves the dismissal of Articles Eleven, Fourteen, and Fifteen. And I will call over the articles. What you're voting on now is empowering me to call over these articles, and if nobody objects or has questions, then these articles will be deemed to have been dismissed. So if you approve me calling over the articles, please press one for yes or two for no now. Motion carries. Okay, so I'm now going to call over the articles, and again, if nobody objects or has questions, then these articles will be deemed to have been dismissed. The first article is Article eleven on page forty-nine, To Appropriate Funds for the Dover Sherburne Regional School District Capital Expenditures for Fiscal Year 2022. Again, if no one has questions or objects to this, this article will be dismissed. Next one is Article fourteen on page fifty, Supplemental Appropriations to Article Three of the 2020 Annual Town Meeting. Again, if nobody has any questions or objections, this article will be deemed to have been dismissed. Lastly, Article fifteen on page fifty, Proposed Amendment to the Zoning Bylaws Involving Accessory Apartments. Again, if there are no questions or holds, this article will be deemed to have been dismissed. Are there any questions or holds with respect to any of these articles? Hearing none, the motion carries. All those articles are dismissed. Okay, next, Article twelve, page forty-nine of your Blue Book. Mr. Kendr.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the following sums recommended for one-time projects be called over by the moderator, and if no objection is made, the town appropriate such sums with free cash. One, Long Range Water Resources Assessment, one-hundred thousand dollars.
Or take any—
Oh.
Oh, that's not in the motion now. Okay, thank you. Could you just read this again there, Mr. Kendr?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the following sums recommended for one-time projects be called over by the moderator, and if no objection is made, that the town appropriate such sums with free cash. One, Long Range Water Resources Assessment, one-hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kendr. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made, is seconded, and I call over one item, which is Long Range Water Resources Assessment, and this is on page forty-nine of your Blue Book. If you approve this motion, then I will then refer to the Long Range Water Resource Assessment item, but the motion that you are voting on now is simply to empower me to refer to that item and to ask if there are any holds or objections. If you approve this motion, you may press one for yes, two for no. Motion carries. Okay, if you turn to page forty-nine, you'll see the article that refers to the hundred-thousand-dollar appropriation for Long Range Water Resource Assessment. Is there any discussion with respect to that item? Any objections or holds? Okay, hearing none, the article is deemed approved. Next, Article thirteen, page fifty of your Blue Book. Mr. Kendr.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum, one-thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars and nineteen cents be transferred from free cash to the purpose of paying the following unpaid bills. Highway Department, Simtest, seventy-three dollars and seventy-eight cents. Elections and Registration Departments to LHS Associates, one-thousand, five-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and forty-one cents.
Thank you, Mr. Kendr. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Now, this requires a four-fifths vote, an eighty percent vote, to approve paying these unpaid bills from prior years. Is there any discussion with respect to this motion? Okay, hearing none, let's move to the vote. Press one for yes, two for no. I'm sorry? Okay, motion carries seventy-four to one. The motion carries by the required four-fifths, seventy-four to one. Thank you. Article sixteen, Mr. Kendr. And Article sixteen, by the way, is page fifty-one of your Blue Book.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Articles sixteen and seventeen be called over by the moderator, and if no objection is made, that the town vote to approve them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kendr, Mr. Andrews. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, again, this has asked me to call over Articles sixteen and seventeen, which are on page fifty-one of your Blue Book. If you approve this motion, then I will call over the items, and if there are no questions or objections, they will have been deemed to be approved. The first motion that we're voting on now is simply to empower me to call these over. All those in favor of the motion, please press one for yes, or if you're opposed, please Motion carries. Okay, if you turn to page fifty-one, the two articles that I'll be calling over, and if you, again, if you have any questions or objections, please voice your questions or objections. First one is Article sixteen, page fifty-one, which is to see if the town will vote to reduce the current rate of interest that accrues on property tax referrals under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Fifteen, Section Five, Clause Forty-One, Cap B, from eighty percent to four percent per year, or to take any other action relative thereto. Are there any questions or objections with respect to that? Okay, Article seventeen, which is also on page fifty-one, to see if the town will vote to increase the current amounts for property tax exemptions under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Five, Clause Forty-One, Cap C, from a maximum of one-thousand dollars to a maximum of two-thousand dollars, or take any other action relative thereto. Any questions or objections with respect to Article seventeen? Hearing none, the articles are deemed approved. Article eight, eighteen. My fingers are getting numb. Article eighteen, page fifty-two of the Blue Book. Mr. Kendr.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Sixty, Section Three D.
Okay, and this is on page fifty-two of your Blue Book. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Kendr has made the motion with respect to Article eighteen, and Mr. Andrews has seconded. Janet Claypool, is Janet here? Janet, did you want to make just a brief comment on this, or?
Thank you.
Janet Claypool, I'm the Director of the Dover Council on Aging. This article would establish an elderly and disabled taxation fund, which would be a voluntary contribution for citizens so that they could check the box on their real estate taxes and provide some funds that would then go into a taxation fund, and an elderly and disabled taxation fund, and a committee would be established that would oversee this to benefit citizens of Dover.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions about this? Okay, this is a majority vote. If you're in favor of the establishment of this fund, you would press one for yes if you're opposed, two for no. You may vote now. Motion carries. Article nineteen, page fifty-two of the Blue Book. Mr. Kendr.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-Two, Section Twenty, to reestablish and other post-employment benefits liability trust fund, OPEB trust fund, effective immediately, to designate the town treasurer as custodian trustee of the OPEB trust fund, to authorize the custodian trustee to employ reputable and knowledgeable investment consultants to assist in determining appropriate investments and pay for those services from the OPEB trust fund, and to authorize the custodian trustee to invest monies in the OPEB trust fund under the prudent investor rule established in GLC Two-O-Three-C.
Okay, I see, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Two-O-Three, Cap C. Okay, a motion has been made by Mr. Kendr. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, second has been made by Mr. Andrews. Mr. Jeffries from the Board of Selectmen, would you care to explain this article, sir?
Mr. Moderator, in two thousand and nine, the town of Dover established the OPEB trust fund. What this does simply is to keep us compliant with the accepted general standards that have been changed, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or discussions with respect to this article? This is a majority vote. If you approve this motion, please press one for yes. Motion carries. Article twenty, Mr. Kendr.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend Chapter Ninety-Two of the General Bylaws of the Town of Dover as set forth in the handout to town meeting and the text on file with the town clerk.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kendr. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, Article twenty, which is on page fifty-three of your Blue Book, is being sponsored by the Cemetery Commission, and Peg Crowley, if you could come up and explain the purpose of this.
Peg Crowley, Cedar Hill Road, Chair of the Cemetery Commission. The handout, which hopefully you all picked up as you came in, pretty much explains these requested changes. B, which is Article Three in the Highland Cemetery Bylaws, currently restricts transfer of ownership from members or relatives of family. We now will allow the owner of a lot to make a requested change in allowing and terming. So it's changing who is able to make that decision. J, allows one body or three cremations in one single space. We're changing that to allow one cremation urn in a burial, one burial site. So that's the change of that section. M— M currently states that a headstone is allowed for a four-grade lot. The change would allow a headstone to be put on a two-grade lot. And the last one is basically a change in wording to eliminate any ambiguity. So that citizens of Dover who are or have been residents of the town for not less than five years are entitled to lot in the cemetery.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Crowley. Are there any questions or discussion with respect to this motion? Yes, ma'am, if you could come up to the microphone, please. And again, please state your name and address.
Sierra Bright, 55 Smith Street. I'm just wondering why the change from three cremated remains to one body and one cremated remain.
Ms. Crowley, would you like to respond to that? Thank you, ma'am.
It's my understanding that the three cremated remains and one body still are allowed, but you can do one cremation on top of one body. Okay, so if you have one lot, maybe Pope, you can help me if I'm wrong on this. Because I was not party to the discussion of all of these changes.
Okay, Mr. Hoffman?
As they occurred, because I was not on the commission at the time.
Okay, Mr. Hoffman, maybe you could explain?
Pope would have a little more background.
All right, thank you, Ms. Crowley.
Pope Hoffman, 12 Rocker Brook Road. Basically, what this is entirely people. So if, one, say there's a husband and a wife, and the husband wants to be cremated, the wife doesn't, but they want to be both in the same grave, this just allows that to happen.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Hoffman or Ms. Crowley? Okay, no, thank you, sir. Thank you, Peg, also. Thank you very much. So we have a motion which has been seconded with respect to the proposed changes for the cemetery. No further discussion. We'll move to a vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please press one for yes. If you're opposed, please press two. You may vote now. Motion carries. Okay, Article twenty-one, page fifty-three of the Blue Book. Mr. Kender.
Mr. Moderator. I move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Assessors pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 59, Section 38H of the Massachusetts General Laws to negotiate and enter into a payment in lieu of tax pilot agreement with the operator of the solar photovoltaic energy generating facility to be developed on the town garage located at 2 Dedham Street, upon such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Assessors shall deem to be in the best interest of the town.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kender. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. This is a majority vote. Are there any questions or discussions with respect to this proposal? Yes, please come to the microphone. Thank you. And name and address, please.
Charlotte Wood Harrington, 2 Forest Street. My question is, how come we're not buying the solar panels?
Okay, Mr. Dwelly, would you like to respond to that question? Why aren't we buying the solar panels?
So, the project has not been finalized yet. It's still under review by the Board of Selectmen. It's not going to be finalized until the actual solar project or installation. But during discussions with the provider, it's deemed more financially viable to lease out a panel or two, if you're funding the company, rather than the town owning the panels. It's more cost-effective structure, that way through the town.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Sir, yep, please proceed to the microphone. Please state your name and address, Mr. Clark.
Chair of the Board of Health, Valley Road. In answer to your question, this is more a tax issue than it is anything else. It has been, since solar panels came out, there have been basically two options. One has been to purchase them, and the owner of those panels would be eligible for both federal and state income tax credits, whereas a nonprofit or municipal entity would not. So by having a corporation which is taxable, purchase them, and then lease them back, the benefit is passed through.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any further questions or discussions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Pressing one will be a yes vote for this motion. Pressing two will be a no. You may vote now. Thank you. Motion carries. Article twenty-two, page fifty-four. Mr. Kender.
Mr. Moderator. I move that the town amend Chapter 83 Animals of the General Bylaws of the Town of Dover for the purpose of updating the chapter and conforming to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 140, with all changes as shown in a text on file with the Office of the Town Clerk, and further that non-sustentative changes in the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the Dover Town Code.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded with respect to Article twenty-two. Any questions or discussion? Again, this is on page fifty-four of your Blue Book. Okay, seeing none, let's move to a vote. All in favor of the motion, please press one. Opposed, please press two. You may vote now. Thank you. Motion carries. Article twenty-three, page fifty-five of your Blue Book. Lease authorization for personal wireless service providers. Mr. Kender.
Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into lease agreements with water or wireless communication providers for wireless communication facilities and related equipment for a period of time not to exceed thirty years on the town's highway garage parcel at 2 Dedham Street.
Thank you, Mr. Kender. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Any questions or discussion with respect to Article three, Twenty-three? This will be a majority vote. Sir, yes, ma'am, come on up to the microphone, please. And name and address, please.
Nicole Saffarian, thirteen Eating House Hill Road. I live directly behind this cell phone tower, and I can tell you it's extremely overloaded. So I have questions about what this would empower the Selectmen to do. Does this include building additional towers? And if it does, would there be a vote on that for the neighbors?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dwelly, would you respond to that, please?
Yep, there would be no additional towers or no additional equipment. All this does is it allows the Selectmen to essentially extend the existing leases of the existing providers on the towers for another thirty years. Presently, the twenty-year leases that we have with the carriers are set to expire in the next two years.
Okay, and would the neighbors still be allowed to attend the meeting when the carriers come and propose additional equipment?
So again, there wouldn't be any additional equipment, but I suppose it would be an opportunity for citizens to request that the town, if there were any changes of equipment, that residents have an opportunity to be able to lend their comments as a voice to the United States.
I ask because it's full. Right now, it's almost full of the towers. So I just want to make sure we don't exceed what's the ten percent left that's there.
Okay. Do you have any further questions, ma'am, then?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments and questions. Any further discussion? Any further questions or comments? Okay, this is a majority vote. Press one for yes, two for no. You may vote now. Motion carries. Article twenty-four. Accept Stagecoach Lane as a public way. Mr. Kender.
Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to establish as a public way and accept the layout of Stagecoach Lane as laid out by the Board of Selectmen and shown on a plan by GLM Engineering Construction, Inc., dated June 18, 2019, on file with the town clerk, and to authorize the Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, or eminent domain any fee easement or other interest in land necessary therefore, provided, however, that such acceptance and authorization is contingent upon the Calendet Corporation entering into and complying with the terms of a making agreement with the town concerning stormwater systems within Stagecoach Lane.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kender. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, again, this is on page fifty-five of your Blue Book. Is there any discussion or questions with respect to this? This will be a two-thirds vote. Mr. Dwelly? Okay. No questions or discussion, then we'll move to a vote. If you're in favor of this motion, please press one for yes. If you're opposed, please press two. You may vote now.
Two-thirds?
Okay, motion carries by more than a two-thirds vote. Article twenty-five, page fifty-five of your Blue Book. Mr. Kender.
Mr. Moderator. I move that the town transfer the sum of $1,900,000 from free cash for the purpose of reducing the FY 2022 tax rate, and that the Board of Assessors is authorized to use the same amount to reduce the tax rate for FY 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Kender. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Motion has been made and seconded to transfer $1,900,000 from free cash. Do I have any discussion or questions? Yes, Ms. Akins? Why don't you just come to the microphone right next to you, Bonnie? That's conveniently located there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bonnie Akins, eighteen Greystone Road. This is the third time that I have spoken in town meeting to voice my concern that the town is holding on to much, too much free cash. Free cash is the amount of money certified by the state annually. That is cash in the bank beyond what is needed to fund the budgeted needs of the town, less unpaid taxes. It does not include stabilization funds. It does not include trust funds. It does not include post-retirement benefit funds. In mid-April, the state certified free cash for Dover as of July 1, 2020, to be $11,924,91. That is $1,724,91 more than the amount the Warren Committee was given to use when preparing the Blue Book. The Blue Book was prepared before the latest free cash amount was known. Since learning of the almost $12 million, the Warren Committee has not revised the amount of free cash to be used to offset total taxes to be raised. Since 2010, the town budget has increased twenty-seven and a half percent. In the same period, certified free cash has increased 169 percent, from $4,400,000 approximately to $11,924,000 approximately. I have a motion, Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead, Ms. Akins.
I move that the town transfer the sum of $2,600,000 from free cash for the purpose of reducing the fiscal year 2022 tax rate, and that the Board of Assessors be authorized to use the same amount to reduce the tax rate for fiscal year 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Akins. So I hear a second for Ms. Akins' motion to amend? I see second, so the motion has been seconded. The procedure that we follow when we have a motion to amend the main motion is to now have a discussion with respect to Ms. Akins' amendment. So Ms. Akins is proposing that we increase the amount that was in the motion from $1,900,000 to $2,600,000. Are there any comments or discussion with respect to Ms. Akins' motion? Yes, Ms. Lisbon?
Carol Lisbon? Carol Lisbon? Two Cross Street. I guess you can all hear me. There we go. Relative to the question of using free cash for this, I'd like someone to explain to me why the overlay reserve has increased by sixty-five percent between fiscal year twelve and fiscal year twenty to the tune of over $300,000. Thank you.
Okay, who would like to answer that question?
I think that'd be most appropriate by the Board of Assessors.
Okay. Ms. Akins?
Bonnie Akins, Chair of the Board of Assessors. One of the reasons is that the total taxable value of the town has increased to now about $3 billion, and that is to cover abatements and other adjustments to the taxes when submitted. A couple of years ago, we did not have enough overlay for a variety of reasons outside of our domain. And to make that up, we had to be sure that we have enough, because overlay has to cover not just abatements, but there has to be enough in the fund to cover any unpaid taxes from prior years. So we've got to be sure there's an annual appropriation. Then, every year, when we deem that there is excess in overlay surplus, this year, we released $100,000 from overlay, which we consider a surplus, which is going to fund part of the reserve fund.
Thank you, Ms. Akins. Any other questions or discussion with respect to Ms. Akins' motion to amend?
Hey, Jim?
Yes.
We have a couple.
Okay, Mr. Springett?
Hopefully, you can hear me. I've been told I have a problem with the microphone. But in any event, I'd come back to Bonnie's point. I have a feeling that if Bonnie and I changed positions, I would get up and say something very similar to Bonnie about free cash. It's been a long, frustrating issue for the town. And we've had a hard time really figuring out the cash flows and why the free cash balance continued to grow. On the other hand, I would hope that Bonnie, if she was sitting in my seat, she would talk about some of the things that I'm going to talk about late this morning. So in 2019, Chris Dwelly became our new town administrator. And one of the things that we did was we wanted to take a top-down look at most of the town's key operations. They included our technology infrastructure. They included the departments that make up what most towns think about as a DPW. And we took a really hard look at our financial department. A year ago or so, we brought in the Department of Revenue to take a look at our processes and practices in our financial departments. And for the most part, we came out with a pretty good score. On the other hand, they had several recommendations that they thought we should adopt to bring our practices into compliance with what was at the time best practices. One of the things that we did was, when I say we, I really mean the town administrator and the staff. We created a finance team, bringing together the various components who deal with budgetary items so that we could have a cross-functional view when we put the budget together. That's been very successful. That's been very successful. And the Department of Revenue recommended a couple of key things. One, we've been constantly asked what our level of free cash should be. Department of Revenue suggests an amount that's 10% to 15% of our operating budget. So our operating budget is about $40 million, so free cash would be somewhere in the $4 to $6 million range. Now, when they talk about free cash, they mean specifically money that has not been, you know, sort of put in an account for a specialized, recognized purpose. So it's unencumbered money. They also recommended to us that we establish stabilization accounts for anticipated known liabilities or expenses. So you can see that that was, that report was in the middle of 2020. This is the first year that we've actually put in place some of their recommendations. So today, we voted to approve the second stabilization account. Previously, we had set up an OPEC account for regional OPEC benefits. Today, we set up the capital stabilization fund and set up some seed money. The plan, the plan that the board has gone back two years was to consider, ask the town to consider a third stabilization account for open space conservation. We intend to, as I understand it today, we intend to bring that forward probably next year. The other thing that we've done today that was a recommendation was to use free cash or stabilization account money to fund one-time expenses. We took $700,000 out of free cash to fund the townhouse repair. We moved $600,000 to seed the capital stabilization fund. We used $100,000 to fund the one-time water resources study. So we've taken out $1.4 million out of free cash so far today. The other things that we've done is we've taken a hard look at our budget process, and we've changed that to a trend budgeting process so that we have a much better handle on flow of money on the expense side, and we've talked a little bit about the revenue side. So those are all things that have happened literally in the last year, and it brings us, brings us back, it brings me back to the, to the question of free cash or cash reserves. So there, to me, there's sort of three issues with free cash. One is, how much is too much? One is, how do you control growth? And the third is, how much do you need to allocate to stabilize the tax rate? So how much is, how much is too much? Department of Revenue said that in terms of unencumbered funds, they would recommend 10% to 15% as a minimum. These guys are mumbling to me. As a minimum for the free cash account, $4 to $6 million. What we don't know is how much do we set aside to cover future liabilities or known expenses? Now, we think that it makes a great deal of sense to save for things like a townhouse roof, maybe an ambulance, but long-term, one-time items, it's better to save for than to go to the levy, tax levies do. So we're trying to, so that the report that we have from the, from the asset managing firm gives us an idea of what we're looking at in terms of buildings. We have identified the OPEC in terms of future liabilities, and then we have other expenses that we know are coming up that we'd like to have some cash for, so it gives us options on how to deal with those situations when they occur. One is Carol. That's going to come up for a vote in a month, and we don't know which way the town's going to vote. It'd be nice to have cash depending on how that vote comes out. Here's hail reservation. That's been proposed, that's being worked on today. That's also an unknown. So there, so when you look forward at what our potential expenses may be, the amount of money that we have in reserve tends to sort of diminish a little bit, and we certainly need to be aware of that. So for me, when the path that we started a year ago is we really started to use or look at financial management, and financial management is long-term. It's not short-sighted. You could cover a long period of time, and you want to do it in a planned, methodical way. Budgeting is a one-year exercise. Budgeting, to do it properly, has to fit under the financial management umbrella, not the other way around. And sort of like the stock market, you have a long-term investment strategy. You don't necessarily move one way to the other because the market went up or down in one particular period of time. So, sorry to be so long-winded, but there is a lot of wind today. It's my inspiration. When it comes, when it comes to the 1.9 million recommendation, our goal has been to stabilize the tax rate. And if you look at the tax rate over the last five years, you will find that it's ranged from a little bit over $13,000 to about $12.80, $12.80 per thousand. That is a pretty good track record over a five-year period. Now, one of my colleagues has said to me, when they're trying to estimate what the amount of money that we allocate for tax stabilization, what it should be, it's a little bit of art and a little bit of science. The history over the last couple of years that have resulted in that stable tax rate. We started, John started the project with a group, and they came back with a number of, we should be using about 1.5 million to stabilize the tax rate, and we did that, I think, for two years. Chris Dwelly came to us this year and suggested 1.6 million to stabilize the tax rate. Board of Selectmen and the Warren Committee were engaged in a series of discussions about what it should be. Some members of the Warren Committee thought that the number should be higher. Some members of the Board of Selectmen thought the number should be lower, but ultimately, the group agreed that 1.9 million was a rational, reasonable, prudent number to use to stabilize the tax rate. The question of growth in the reserves is a frustrating one. But when you have some, so the number that Bonnie quoted, the, was it almost $12 million certified, was something that we came to know pretty late in the day, in April. It was a shock to a number of people, including me, and my first reaction was, I can't actually speak about at the meeting today, but my second reaction was, we really need to dig in and understand the drivers of that growth. The reaction to a surprise isn't another surprise or a bad decision. It is to dig in deeper and find out what's going on. I think if, you know, I think our track record for the last couple of years has been very positive. I think the Warren Committee and the Board of Selectmen have done an awful lot of work to come up to that 1.9 number, and I really encourage you to support the Warren Committee's recommendation and the Board of Selectmen's recommendation. Thank you.
Does the Warren Committee care to make a comment?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would echo much of what Bob says. I will also point out that there are a range of opinions, both in town and amongst members of our community, and while we were not, while we collectively had, I'll call it a range of possible, about where we thought this article should be, you know, I will say this is on the lower side, but that was, given the information we had at the time, we felt this was prudent, and as Mr. Springett noted, we're trying to understand how our estimate was not where we, you know, it wasn't as accurate as we would have liked. So we think this is a reasonable and prudent amount, and there was a lot of deliberation and a lot of work that went into this, and that's, I think that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. Any further, yes, Ms. Yuritan Ken, Ken Yuritan? It's just my mind is frozen.
You've done a great job, and I'll try to be brief, but, and I was a banker before retirement. Even if we go with my friend Bonnie's recommendation, my calculations show we'll have 7.9 million left in free cash. So I don't see any recommend, any reason why we should not support Bonnie, and I urge people to support Bonnie on this. I think, I love these people up here. They know that Bonnie and I are sort of the, I don't know, what can I say? Chime bells that keep on saying, "You're hoarding too much money," and you should let the voters at town meeting and through overrides decide how the money should be spent. So I support Bonnie. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Akins, and then Mr. Hoffman.
Thank you, Jim. I understand everything that Mr. Springett is saying, but this town has almost no debt, very, very little. I just told you, we have almost $3 billion of value, and I think we have less than $5 million of debt. So we have $3 billion of value and less than $5 million of debt. The other thing is that as the debt service has dropped off in the town annual budget, it has been absorbed by every other department in town. So it's time to consider borrowing over the long term so that the people who are here are paying for what they are losing, and some of the excess that has been raised needs to be given back. My $700,000 out of almost $2 million was a quite modest suggestion for this year, so I stick with my amendment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Pope Hoffman, 12 Roderick Road. I think Bonnie's suggestion is way too low. I don't, I don't think that the townspeople should be penalized for the Warren Committee and the Selectmen's decision for 1.9 million because they didn't, or because they were not fully aware of the actual free cash. The residents of Dover have basically provided the amounts for free cash, give some of that money back. I don't have an amendment, but I think 2.6 million, it should be like 3 million. That's my feeling.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Any further comments? Yes, Ms. Hunter?
Thank you. I'm sure you're all sick of listening to me, but here I go again. So I have like a little mental math game for all of you. So I think it's really important that everybody understand that when you give back free cash, that what it really is, is it's a one-year rebate. So I'm just going to go over some numbers with you, and I'm rounding up because I can't do math in my head very well anymore. So let us all assume that our operating budget is approximately $40 million, and we have 5,000 households in Dover. Well, it's a hypothesis. It's just so you can do the math, all right? And so the property, each, each household then, if all households were valued at the same amount, again, this is a hypothesis, their tax bill would be $8,000. Now, let's assume that in a given year, we decide to give back to the taxpayers to reduce their tax bill $2 million. So that means we take $38 million and divide it by the same 5,000 households, and we have a tax bill, or everybody then gets a bill of $7,600. Great. You know, it's $400 less than what your assessment should have been. Now you come to the next year, and you haven't permanently reduced your spending to that $38 million level. So in the next year, what happens is there's some kind of inflation. So let's assume it's 2.5%, and again, it's approximate math here. So now the total operating budget is $41 million, and you're taking that amount and dividing it by the same 5,000 households. So now everybody's tax bill for the next year is $8,200, $600 higher than what it was the previous year because of the rebate, and so that's a 7.8% increase, and people are going to be, citizens of Dover will be really upset. So what the Board of Selectmen is trying to do, we're gradually trying to give this money back, and are, we have a plan in place to give it back to the town, but at the same time, what we are striving for is not to have these peaks in individuals' tax bills. We are trying to stabilize it. It's one approach. You know, we believe it's the prudent approach. There is documented history showing that when towns have given a lot of free cash back, a few years later, they're overrides because they need additional funds. It happened to us in the town of Dover. It happened to our neighbors in the town of Wellesley. All we're saying is be patient with us as we find the right balance to give this back. We just don't want there to be any unintended consequences. But again, it's up to the citizens of Dover to decide, but you need to understand what this impact is to all of you individually.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Any further comments or questions?
Yes, ma'am. You're going to have to get closer to the microphone, man. Try the other one, Tom. Sorry. That one is shot.
You're saying loud enough. Amelia Plasme, 22 Norman D. I just want to thank everyone for their work on this, and I really appreciate Ms. Akins' comments. I just, I think as a country, and I've seen at the national level, all the way down to many organizations I've been involved with at the local level, where there isn't that over the years, we built this great infrastructure as a country, and it hasn't been properly maintained for the sake of giving people their tax money back, and everything's starting to fall apart. And as Ms. Hunter well pointed out, then you're going to have this huge spike because the chickens are coming home to roost. And I just think what the Selectmen and the Warren Committee have said makes a lot of sense. Let's finish looking at the numbers. We now have a town administrator. We're finally making a plan to know when the roof's going to go so that we don't have to tap free cash, that these things will be in place, and I just think it makes a lot of sense, and I support this warrant and encourage others to, because I think that it's going to make the difference. Yeah, if we have all this money next year, we can get the rebate then, but let's not jump the gun. Let's see where we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or? Mr. Crowley has, Mr. Crowley has made a motion to move the question. Do I hear a second?
Amendment.
Right. To move the amendment question. Do I hear a second? Okay, I have a second. Pat Crowley. Okay. So a motion has been made and seconded to move the question with respect to Ms. Akins' amendment. When a motion is made to move the question, we have to vote on that with no further debate. It's a two-thirds vote. So I will, when I get the sign from Sarah, are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
Okay. You are voting on moving the question with respect to the amendment. The amendment was to basically increase, if you turn to page 55 of the Blue Book, the main motion was to transfer $1.9 million from free cash. Ms. Akins' amendment is increasing that amount from $1.9 million to $2.6 million. We were debating Ms. Akins' amendment, and now the, Mr. Crowley is seconded by Ms. Crowley, a motion has been a motion has been made to move the question with respect to Ms. Aiken's amendment. Okay. I'm sorry. Move the question means that we will stop debate on Ms. Aiken's amendment and vote on it. Okay? No, right. And again, this is not a vote on the amendment itself. This is a vote to simply stop debate. Okay? So it's a vote to stop debate, and it's a two-thirds vote. You may vote now. One for yes, two for no. Okay, the motion to stop debate has passed by two-thirds. So we will now move to a consideration of Ms. Aiken's amendment. And again, Ms. Aiken's amendment was to increase the amount to be transferred from free cash from 1.9 million to 2.6 million. So you'll be voting now on her amendment. If you vote yes, then her amendment will be approved. If you vote no, then her amendment will fail. You may vote now. One for yes, two for no. Okay, Ms. Aiken's motion fails. So now we will return to the main motion, which is to transfer $1.9 million from free cash. Is there any further discussion with respect to the main motion? Yes, okay, could I have the count? The vote was 31 in favor of Bonnie's motion and 45 opposed. So we now return to the main motion, which is the transfer of $1.9 million from free cash. Any further discussion with respect to the main motion? Okay, let's move to a vote. If you're in favor of the main motion, the transfer of 1.9 million from free cash, press one for yes. If you're opposed, press two for no. And again, this is a majority vote. Okay. Motion carries. Could I have the votes count, please? Motion carries 71 to 5. Okay. Onto article, the last article for the day, for the morning, a motion to adjourn. Mr. Kendra?
Mr. Moderator, I move this meeting dissolved.
Do I hear a second? Motion has been made to dissolve and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for your patience.